Well, good evening everyone and welcome to the December 21st, 2020. Regular meeting of city council. And it's also our holiday Christmas edition. So yeah, there you go. I knew you'd have it done. Welcome and welcome to all the people listening at home and joining us on the YouTube. So if we want to start. Start the pledge of allegiance, if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the reason for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Here.
Coche.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Janutus.
Here.
Blue Hardy.
Here.
Miesak.
Here.
And we need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Rhodes for tonight. By Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Blue Hardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
Thank you. Council, you have the minutes, excuse me, of the work session of December 7th, 2020. Any corrections to those? Excuse me. Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Miesak, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Blue Hardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
And council, you have the minutes of the regular meeting of December 7th, 2020. Any corrections to those? Seeing none. And I have a motion for acceptance. By Spinks, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Blue Hardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
And we have no old business tonight, so we will get to the reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple items I wanted to share. First, I wanted to thank all of our officers, all of the volunteers, and especially all of the donors who helped with the shop with a cop this past weekend. It was, obviously, it had to be done in a much different way than in years past, but, you know, it turned out to be very successful. We were able to, you know, our officers were able to acquire some lists and we went shopping and they were able to deliver all of those items that they were able to purchase. And obviously, that was made possible through generous donations. So I want to thank all of them for, once again, you know, making that program happen under a very challenging year. And with that, you know, there's no doubt, I think, that this year has been a challenge for every single one of us. But, you know, the holidays are also times to be thankful for and not to lose sight of some of the things that are important. And I wanted to just take a minute and thank all of the residents in town for, you know, their patience, for, you know, being flexible with, you know, how, you know, we've changed how we deliver services and how we do business that does not go unnoticed. And I appreciate that cooperation. I wanted to thank our business owners. I know that that's been challenging as well. You know, some of them have contributed in many different ways, either through donations or in-kind efforts to help one another. And that is very appreciative and you really learn, you get to see what a true community is. And I appreciate that. And I want to thank all of our employees. Obviously, no doubt, things have been challenging, but we have changed the way we deliver and do business. And I think it is a silver lining. We've learned a lot. We've helped one another. We've helped those in need in the community. And again, I don't think any of that can, you can't get through a year like this year without everybody working together. And that is residents, the businesses, your coworkers. And obviously, I want to thank city council and Mayor Coche and Frank and John and all the department heads. You know, there's been days this year that have been trying. And I think collectively, you know, we've done a good job pushing forward. And we're going to continue to keep pushing forward and look for brighter days ahead. So I just wanted to send a quick thank you to everybody. You know, seeing how everybody responded and worked together and helped one another definitely lifts your spirits. And that's what Bedford's about. And I'm appreciative and thankful for all of those groups and people. So with that being said, on behalf of myself, my family and everybody, our administration, happy holidays and happy new year. Be safe and we'll see everyone soon.
Thank you. Mr. Montello, Law Director.
Well, I just wanted to echo Michael's statements. I feel the same way about everybody. Thank you all and have Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Mayor, thank you for that point about that liquor license. Very good point, I got to say. I did not think of that. Thank you very much. End of report.
Thank you. And Finance Director, Mr. Gambosi.
Mayor, members of council, the community, wish you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. At this point, I'd like to thank Jimmy Wagner, the man behind the camera, did a great job this year. I really think he's a very professional company, did a great job with all these videos this year and appreciate all his efforts. Also, my employees, the employees of the city of Bedford, they did a fantastic job this year. Everything all considered, what we've gone through, a lot of cooperation, a lot of things done differently. We'll be addressing a lot of new issues coming into January this year. Be writing some letters to the public in regards to taxes and things of that nature. But for this time of year, be thankful for what we have and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. End of report.
Thank you. And City Council, Mr. Saunders.
All right, I'd just like to quickly wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy new year. I know this past year has been trying and hopefully everybody's managed to stay healthy. And let's hope 2021 will be able to turn things around with the vaccine coming. Hopefully, we can manage to knock this thing out in a reasonable amount of time. I do have a couple points. This one's for Mike. Christmas in Bedford Falls. I was surprised at the number of people that were in the downtown area. But I was also surprised and got several comments on it that the city of Bedford did not clean the sidewalks off this year. They were still full of snow and those crab apples were horrendous. They're all over the place and they were extremely slippery when wet. It didn't put our best face forward when this happened this year. Now, I know we've had some COVID issues with our employees and stuff too. But hopefully for next year, we don't let the similar situation occur again. But it was quite a mess there. So considering the number of people that were from outside of the city, because I talked to people in North Royalton, Strongsville, North Olmsted, there were quite a few people from outside the area that were in that area. Now, the second point, and I got this from a couple of the businesses. Nobody's enforcing the hourly parking on Broadway. There are certain businesses that park there all day long and they're taking up spaces that some of our retail facilities treasure because they want their people that stop in and so forth. So I don't know if we can crack down on that for a little while and see if we can keep traffic moving off of Broadway from the parking. But something probably needs to be done in that light.
There's just two points to that. One, some of it has to do with signage and I will touch on that in the weekly memo. I won't touch on that right now. The second point is last year, the Supreme Court ruled you cannot chalk tires, you can't mark tires. You have to have someone observe that and observe that car not move for two hours and then you can issue that ticket.
Oh my, my figures.
You cannot, you cannot chalk tires to where you could chalk it or, you know, mark it and come back. And if it doesn't move, you cannot do that. So that changes the dynamic. I mean, having an officer there, you know, and doing that, that's one challenge. And I will say, we have shared and communicated with some of the business owners downtown. We did so as recently as last Friday and shared some of this with them and they were unaware of that. So that law definitely has changed the game and that happened about a year ago. And as far as the signage, I will, I'll have something in this week's memo regarding the signage. In this, there is also, when we did our sign initiative, there was discussions as far as additional signage for public lots and things of that nature, which we are looking at. But I'll have more detail in this week's memo.
All right, because the businesses on the northern end of Broadway rely on the street parking, especially because they're farther away from the muni lots. So that's more of an area that seems to be an issue. But thanks for clarifying that. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Good evening, everybody. Today is the first day of winter. It's winter solstice. The gates of winter solstice is open. May this day bring you peace, tranquility, and harmony. Let the dark sink into silence so we can hear and see the light. This is a bring from Happy and Happy Solstice. Also Merry Christmas. Happy Hanukkah was last week. Want to cover everything. I just want to take this moment to thank Mike, Malice, Frank, John, Chief, both chiefs of doing just a splendid job for our city under these very trying times. I mean, we went through a lot of, and to thank our residents for being very patient through these trying times. It's been a tough year. It started out in March. We missed, we were closed down during Easter. We went through several holidays. We're going through a big one right now with Christmas coming up. And I do, and I thank him for, thank you, Mike, for using your imagination and all of counsel coming through. I loved our Fourth of July parade this year, downsized, being able to go on the side streets. Thank you, Mayor, too, for an all of counsel. That was just so nice because we don't realize when we have those big days, it's a tradition, just like the Christmas tree lighting and stuff. We have so many wonderful traditions here in Bedford. I'm kind of an outsider. I've been here for a while now and I'm here to stay. But that, that's what makes me love this, our city so much is our traditions and the things that I've heard people talking and seeing on Facebook about didn't have the Christmas tree lighting. That's people's favorite things about Thanksgiving, the night before, and families getting together. But families still were able to go down there. And I think Santa Claus got a lot, a lot of letters down in our mailbox this year. And he's got a lot of writing, a lot of catching up to do because I think, because people were coming from all over to be able to spend that special moment with their grandchildren and their children. I know a lot of my kids and my residents, they wrote letters to Santa. So that's great to still have those. Service Department, and of course Billy, he knows how, how much we love him and how he just does a beautiful job in the summertime. And the lighting of the downtown is just, makes me so proud. I shared that I was in downtown Chagrin Falls last night and heard someone say, well, you ought to see Bedford's lighting. You ought to see their downtown. So that made me very, that made me very proud of that. So I just wish everybody a safe holiday. Be wise when you do get with, together with your family. This thing is not gone. Just remember what the season is about as well. And I hope everybody has a blessed Christmas and a very happy new year. And I will see you in 2021. And we're hoping that 2021 will be a lot better for everybody. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. Well, yeah, you said it all, Sandy, I think. That you're right, a lot, a lot of things happened this year that should make us all very grateful and proud of our city officials and Michael, of course, and the whole staff for, you know, managing through this. And this truly, this is the shortest day of the year. So from here on out, the light gets increases and I hope that we could, we all look forward to the new year. And I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday of whatever sorts. And, you know, a Happy New Year. And this is a time for us to rest. I know we've been resting all year long, unfortunately. But just a few more weeks of some quiet time with our close family members would really be a blessing. So best wishes to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blue Hardy.
I also want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Everything else has been pretty much said. I also want to thank Mike and John and Frank and everybody at City Hall. You guys have kept everything going for us throughout this whole ordeal. And it's really been great to know that you haven't had to lay anybody off or anything else. And you guys have come up with some creative ways to pull us through this whole ordeal. Hopefully, things will get better and we get back to council chambers and get back to regular meetings and everything else. So everybody stay safe and have happy holidays and end of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Miesak.
Thank you, sir. Hello, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. And whatever you feel is the right greeting, you can use it because we all say Merry Christmas on this day here. I want to thank not only the administration, but our council because we've been on hold for almost a whole year. We've been, we learned how to do Zoom. Matter of fact, I kind of mastered it now, so I don't know. I hope that we don't have to learn something new for the next year. But what I'd like to say is we've learned to survive most of this COVID here in this area by doing the right thing. We get calls from constituents that are down and out. If you're like myself, and I know a couple others, we'll give them enough of time to listen to what they have to say and kind of give them a positive outlook. It kind of resolves itself. I feel that the leaves came and went. We got the snow and then the leaves came and went again because our city was on top of it. And like I say, if we didn't have a good administrative group that cared for the people that live in this city, I think somebody doesn't have their eyes open or they don't want to understand that. We do work together here as best we can. We have a very reliable fire and police department. They're there in no time, no matter what the situation is. I have one question to Mike, if he can. They're just, they're saying that some hospitals have already received dosages for these COVID shots to be given out. I know that the first responders are definitely entitled to the first doses. Have we heard that any of it has come to our Bedford U.A. at all? For dosages to be given to the employees there?
I have not heard. No, I do not believe they received any yet.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to, like I says, Sandy took it all and she took the ball running to say everything we had to say. How could we feel about our city? And I think we're Bedford proud and God bless everybody. Stay healthy, well. And we got to get through this next few months and maybe we'll be back to normal and we can get to see each other more often. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. And since everybody said everything I wanted to say, I'm still going to say it again because it's that important that, you know, I want to thank council. We're all working for the same, same goals here. Like we say, it was a trying year. We got through it and I think most of us are happy that 2020 is ending and really looking forward to 2020, so 2021, so we can move on and get going with things in a more normal fashion, whatever that is. And I want to just give a special thanks to our administration, Mike, Frank, John, Tracy for our clerk. You guys do such a great job all year, all year. And our residents, you need to know, these guys just work from the bottom of their heart. They are concerned about the city of Bedford. I get to see them all the time, work closely with them. And they work so hard and do so much for us that that doesn't get seen in the public. And I wish sometimes we could see what they're doing. But I want all of you to know, they are working hard for all of us. And I thoroughly, thoroughly want to thank each and every one of them for doing what they do. And that goes for our employees too, all the way from the chiefs and the department heads down to the newest member of any of our departments. They do a terrific job. And, you know, the fire getting through this, going on at squad calls with this virus out there just complicates everything. And the, and the police, they have to deal so up close with people. And they've come through it too. And then our service department and they're working shorthanded down there. But they're doing the job day in, day out. And I'm just so proud of all of them. And I don't want to just say it here at the end of the year, but every day I thank them in my prayers that we have such a great group of people working together to get the jobs done. Is everything perfect? No. But we're sure darn close with, with the effort that our employees put in day in and day out. And again, just thanks to them and thanks to our citizens for hanging in there, like many of you have said. Putting up with having City Hall partially closed, partially opened and totally closed. I know it's a headache, but that's the hand we're dealt and that's, that's what we deal with. And hopefully, things will loosen up a little bit as we move along through the new year. So again, thank you to everybody and have a wonderful, wonderful Christmas season. Enjoy your families as much as you can, whether it's on Zoom or in person. And have a happy and healthy new year. And I can't say more and I know all of you council said the same thing. Just hang in there. We're going to, we're going to pull out of this even stronger and better. So thank you. And with that, let's get on to business. Being this is the last meeting of the year. All right. Ordinance number 9837-20. An ordinance appropriating the city's coronavirus relief fund payment received pursuant to amended substitute House Bill 481 to the city's COVID-19 response and directing the city manager to declare a proclamation. And can I have a motion for suspension? By Spinks, second by Saunders. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Blue Hardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
A motion for third and final. By Miesak, second by Janutus. And.
I'll talk about it, Mayor.
Frank, you want to take that?
Yeah, in regards to this ordinance, like just distributions one, two, and three. The city was lucky enough to get some additional funding from the county as well as other cities and a small amount of $959.22 that they just had sent out to everybody. So we're accounting for that and how we'll spend it. Mostly, that's going to be PPE and supplies. And then in the meantime, we applied for a grant to receive from the county, an additional $140,040. Jennifer Kuzma did that, our grants person, economic development coordinator. She was able to obtain that grant. We will be in our ordinance tonight for appropriations. You'll see that I'm advancing the funds. So we will utilize those funds towards food distributions, door repairs, improvements to City Hall and some labor costs on first responders. And in doing so, we will be able to get reimbursed from the county sometime next year for this, these funds. So in addition to what we've received already, kudos to her in obtaining that grant and we'll be able to do some improvements to Ellenwood as well as City Hall and the entranceways and make them no-touch facilities. So I ask council to pass this ordinance as well as our appropriations later in the, in the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Don, you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to ask Frank so that the general public realizes how much Frank and Jennifer have worked along with Mike. What is the total money that we've gotten in grants this year because of the COVID? Do you have an idea?
CARES funds alone, including some extra funds coming from the Bureau Workers' Comp, which was substantial for us too. We're at 1,161,000 at this point. And at that point of just the CARES funds money in relation to improvements that we're doing and a lot of projects that we're working on, as well as our first responders. That's what we're utilizing the funds for right now.
I know it's been a trying year and we thank you for being able to bring these funds up because otherwise we'd have to pay for them ourselves. So great job.
Appreciate the feds giving us those funds. And the government.
You have a comment?
If I could just add one, and I just wanted to kind of add to that. And I included it in some of the figures in the memo to council last week. But to Don's point and kudos to Jen and Frank and other departments, we have received just over the last five years, just under $10 million in grants. That's, that's a lot of dollars. And that goes, you know, we've applied for grants that have been $800 to plant some extra tree to a half, a half a million dollar grant. So, you know, for a city our size, it's substantial. We're, if you go back over 20 years, we're over $40 million. But just looking in the last five years, it's $9 million and change. And, you know, Frank's a big part of that. He puts, keeps track of all that. Some of it's to keep us in line, to make sure we're following everything that we're supposed to. But he does a great job and our staff applying and locating it. It definitely helps do what we've been doing in projects and things of that nature. And obviously, those efforts benefited this year in helping us get through, you know, these, these times.
And I might add, in regards to infrastructure repairs and things of that nature too, the grants come, are invaluable in regards to obtaining funding from federal, state, county areas as much as possible. And that's what we strive to do all the time. And it does assist us a lot in getting all our projects done. So just thought I'd add that.
Yep. Again, kudos. And clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Blue Hardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
And ordinance number 9838-20. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Allied Door Systems, Inc. and declaring an emergency. May I have a motion for suspension? By Spinks, second by Blue Hardy. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Blue Hardy.
Yes.
Miesak.
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Miesak, second by Saunders. Mike, you want to take this and the, and you can explain the next one, they're kind of companion ordinance. Um, Mike, you want to take this and the, uh, and you can explain the next one. They're kind of companion ordinances.
Sure. Uh, one of the things that we looked at doing that some of the, uh, grant dollars and funds that came in were able to, uh, cover was, uh, the public entrance ways at the municipal complex as well as at the Ellenwood Center. Um, they, they needed, they, they were aging, um, especially the one at, uh, the Ellenwood Center is actually not being used right now. Um, we are looking to get, um, censored doorways to where they'll open automatically, um, at both the east and west entrance of Ellenwood as well as the main entrance at, um, the municipal center and the entrance near the building and water departments. Um, what we did is the, in the next ordinance, there's, uh, a quote, uh, we received and we recommend going with Allied Door, um, who came in at $20,182. Uh, we did receive a second quote that was, um, close to, um, $22,000. So they were over. Um, and it's our recommendation to go with Allied and make those replacements of the entrance ways at the municipal center. Uh, same with at the Ellenwood Recreation Center, we received, uh, multiple quotes. Allied was, uh, uh, cheaper of the two quotes on the east entrance. They were a little above, uh, the other quote on the west entrance, but it would make sense to go with the same company. Um, in addition, Allied, Allied also did the door replacements, uh, at Ellenwood on the east entrance, which will stay, but they will be modifying that entry to include the sensors to where the doors will go automatically. Um, so in total, we'll be going with both of these next, both of the ordinances will go through Allied. Um, they will be funded through the, um, through the grants, a small portion coming out of the general fund through the, um, Ellenwood Center improvements. And these entrance ways, as I said, the public entrance ways, um, will be with sensors. They won't be a push button. Um, they'll be touch free, hands free, and they'll open automatically.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none. Uh, clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Thank you. And before we get to the next one, I just want to remind everybody, if you have a comment during the hearing of citizens, uh, please email, uh, mike@citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Citymanager@bedfordoh.gov and we'll get to those at the hearing of citizens. Okay. Ordinance number 9839-20. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Allied Door Systems, Inc., and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension, please. By Janudas, second by Fluharty. Uh, clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Janudas. And Mike thoroughly explained this, so I think we can go right to the vote. Uh, anybody have a question? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks? Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance number 9840-20. An ordinance amending ordinance number 9750-19 passed December 16th, 2019, providing compensation for the clerk of court and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension by Miesak, second by Janudas. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Janudas. Um,
I'll take this.
Frank, okay?
Yeah. Uh, in regards to the clerk's salary, uh, this, it's a 60% match that the cit, the city pays plus 15% of the allocation of the court costs. So net on this, uh, amount of salary, uh, the city is responsible for just, uh, just slightly over $18,000. It's, uh, so, and that's for the whole count, uh, his whole payroll, uh, not including benefits. But in regards to this, it's a very reasonable increase compared to other cities. Uh, we look, uh, usually the clerk makes 85% of the judge's salary. That's where this keeps them in line with that too. And that's for, uh, most clerks throughout the state of Ohio.
Thank you. And, and just to, uh, say that our clerk of courts does a terrific job over there. Uh, Tom Day does a great job. He's, uh, like the rest of our administration, he dealt through the, uh, coronavirus remarkably well. And, uh, he, he deserves his compen, compensation and, uh, the court has been a good partner with the, uh, the city. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
And the last ordinance of the year, ordinance number 9841-20. An ordinance amending ordinance number 9738-19, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford, Ohio during the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension, please. By Fluharty, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
And a motion for third and final by Miesak, second by Janudas. And, uh, Frank?
I'll take this one. I had to get one last ordinance in as the last one for the year. Uh, we have the $140,000 advance that we're going to be putting into the fund for the cares money, uh, waiting for the county to reimburse, uh, based on what we'll submit for that for two, for next year. Uh, we also have in regards to that, some salt money, $30,000. We're setting aside extra in the street on in our fund. We have the $140,000 budgeted plus the, that's number four, number five of the CARES Act funds included in this ordinance. As well as if you remember in council, we passed the last meeting, a valve machine that's going to help the, uh, water department to be able to go down there and repair all the valves and the water lines that we have in the city. It's about $70,000 for that machine. Uh, but on the other hand, on the escrow account, ODA, we won't need that. So we'll be reducing the budget in the sewer fund by 49, $49,525. And I asked council to approve that this evening so I can get those appropriations in by year end.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
And with that, we come to the hearing of citizens. I say if somebody wishes to, uh, send out a comment, citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Mike, we have anything?
Muted.
Sorry about that. Uh, no comments. I've been, um, refreshing it, uh, consistently and, um, nothing as of yet. I doing it one more time?
Yep. We'll give it a moment.
Yeah, no comments.
Okay. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment by Saunders, second by Spinks. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Council, thank you. Administration, and again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and see y'all next year.
Thank you.
Everybody, God bless.
Merry Christmas.
Stay safe.
Good night.